So this is our joint work session with all the cities who could participate and the county. And I'd like everybody to introduce themselves. I'll begin. I'm Sarah Nebiker, Platte County Commissioner, District 2.
I'm Don Boone, County Manager for about 18 days now.
Good job. What's he done for so far?
Excuse me?
Hey, everybody. Sarah Nebecker.
Said, "What's he done for so far?"
Monica Steele, Assistant County Manager.
Tom Brownson, Astoria City Council.
Catherine Sullivan, Commissioner, District 4.
Seth Seidel, County Commissioner.
Brandon O'Leary, County City Council.
Steve Reddick, Seaside City Council.
Hi, I'm Chad Flot, President of the Council. I'm the Governor's Regional Solutions Coordinator for Tullip, Platte, and Columbia Counties. I appreciate the opportunity to be here. We have the House of Platte County Commissioners for five, the Southern County, down south of the all, right? Chief de Montero, Seaside City Council.
Chief of Commerce, Seaside Mayor.
Robert Rock, Astoria City Council.
Jeff Spalding, Astoria City Council.
Robert E. Missley, County City Council.
Hallie Conover, Gearhart City Council.
Rita Backrow, Gearhart City Council.
Joan Herman, Astoria City Council.
Jessamyn West, Astoria City Council.
Bruce Jones, Astoria Mayor.
Thank you.
We missed somebody.
Oh!
The Fringe, yeah. I'm hand-wet. Platte County Commissioners, District 4.
So I know your time is valuable, and we really appreciate you taking the time to have this meeting. And we're going to talk about a few things. You have an agenda in front of you. So I understand that there was some information or discussion at a recent Cedar meeting. And Monica, would you please ...
Sure. So for, at our monthly Cedar Board meeting, it was a topic on the housing study and what the cities and counties are currently doing. And so the cities just kind of went around the room and spoke to different steps that they've taken so far, as well as what the county's done. And as many of you know, because you're the ones who are working on it, what was reported is just that everybody has a different approach. Everybody is looking at things a little bit differently. The city of Cannon Beach is evaluating things such as the short-term rentals. Gearhart already has in place a pretty strict short-term rental program. The city of Warrenton is, you know, doing a large variety of different types of housing options that they're trying to get approval for, one of those being the recently approved dormitory housing for Pacific Coast Seafoots. And then the county is also looking at different things they did in regards to not just the housing study, but just the houselessness issue, you know, drafted an RNO supporting the effort that is being done to address the houselessness issue. And then we're also incorporating things with our comp plan. So everybody's going to take a different, slightly different approach to it because it's very dependent on your demographics of the other cities. So that was what was reported.
Okay, thank you. And I welcome, we welcome any discussion regarding this, of what's happening in your areas, to follow up with what Monica might have said. I was just recently at a meeting for our comprehensive plan update. And that was earlier today. And they are looking at possible solutions through zoning, or they're just, they opened it up. They want to also address this issue. So I thought that was valuable.
I would add a feedback on that, because it's a common theme among the comp plan review committees all over the county. And so I approached Representative Mitchell because it takes some statewide legislation, and she indicated her willingness to follow up on that. So if we have things that we want to have happen, and we can come to a common agreement on that, I think it would be a good way to go forward if we haven't advocated at the statewide level. The second thing is I've been attending the statewide Housing Stability Council meetings because Oregon Housing and Community Services is where the money is being funneled by the state legislature into a state department. So that's a good meeting to go to on the first Friday of every month in Salem. It's available online if people want to listen in and get first-hand exposure to what's being said. There are minutes online, but that Oregon Housing Stability Council is a group that's looking at housing all over Oregon, and they say that rural Oregon is their focus for them. So we'll hold it to that.
Thank you. Also, Tiffany Mitchell was at this meeting. So she is aware of that segment. Maybe she goes to all of the periodic review comp plans.
Yeah, I don't know that she's ...
I don't know, but she was at this one. So where they brought this up, yes?
I just remembered that the Regional Solutions Team just adopted an updated work plan, and regional housing initiatives has been on our work plan for quite some time and worked with a number of cities and counties in the region. We're in this room, but we continue to engage in a network of money that will come through Oregon Housing and Community Services that's related to workforce housing, or that middle-income housing will come through the Regional Solutions Network. And so in the previous legislative session, there were five pilot projects throughout the state for workforce housing investments. And one of them is in our region in South Tullip County. And so there were some lessons learned through those. But in any way that Regional Solutions Team can be a support in this area, it's an area that we're engaged in. And the Governor recently hired a new housing policy advisor, and we've been engaging with her particularly on the rural housing needs. And so we communicate both rural and coastal that I'm trying to keep in front of them. So if there is any help from ...
Commissioner, there was one other thing that I forgot to mention that kind of came up at this Cedar meeting when we were talking about the housing situation, was also just kind of looking at the transportation situation in regards to the housing situation, because they, a lot of the conversation has been that they kind of go hand-in-hand.
Yes. And also with housing, you know, there's different segments of the population that are in need. And we know workforce housing is really important, and it's important to our economy. But also, we have an opioid crisis in our county. And part of the barrier for these people getting treatment is housing. And Kara Oregon, who, well, Leslie Ford, she, I don't know if you know her, but she works with Kara Oregon in the opioid prevention section. And she said that they are going to be expanding to also look at housing and transportation, because that is a barrier for people to get treatment and to be clean and sober. And I know that's kind of a segment that we maybe think, oh, well, that's not as important. But it actually is really important, because we are, we have a crisis here. We have the highest rate of overdoses in the state. And with treatment, with good treatment, these people can get their lives back and be productive citizens again. So we do want that.
I'll just add, so the connectivity between transportation and housing, mental health and public health and housing, the other connection that's coming up quite frequently, particularly in this region, is around childcare. And Commissioner Thompson and I have been working on a childhood task force in Platte County, but the Northwest Regional ESP is expanding that work and looking at connections for childcare and transportation, and childcare and housing as well. So it's just emerging, but there is a lot of connectivity around those.
Good.
I would say one of the challenges, pardon, one of the challenges is when they're looking statewide, there's a big push for diversity, equity, and inclusion. So they're looking for measures of how we're dealing with populations, people of color. So that becomes problematic, because when we apply grants through Regional Solutions to get to the money, we're penalized if we're too homogeneous a population. So if you've got ways that we can look at that and make that, because I'm pretty sure folks are here, but how to make those invisible people visible, given the constraints of the fear of ICE and all that kind of thing. So how do we really make ourselves competitive and also serve an underserved population?
I might just add on to that, the greed, and one of the things that my rural partners and I are talking about is how we continue to identify rural Oregon and our rural communities as an opportunity to be inclusive and engaging in programs that we don't always have access to. So couching it a little bit differently can also be helpful at the statewide level.
There, um, I hope this fits intermath, but admittance to some universities, they consider folks from rural communities as being a added diversity to their schools, because there's more population now, a percent of the United States of America, rural. And so, you know, if you're some poor kid from an isolated rural community, you're bringing a different point of view to that public body. So I don't know if it comes on money or not.
You know what I'm saying? It's accurate, yeah.
We argue for geographic diversity, but it isn't as compelling as I would like. Kind of turn their head away and pretend I'm not talking. So I think we need to keep talking about, to have geographical equity all over the state, but we also need to be sensitive to what they're saying, which is there are disadvantaged populations of all kinds, male health and people of color and all of that. So to the extent that we as community leaders can be aware of that and feed that information into our Regional Solutions staff, it's going to help all of us get the funding we need, I hope.
I just wanted to assure that everybody knows that Coda is opening an opioid clinic at Seaside, I think next week they go in for treatment. We know that there are people in Seaside that are having every day a painful headache at the four o'clock morning they're getting their treatment. So they're going to be here at work by eight o'clock all pretty fine. And that will start the sort of problem issue. Some controversy around this room. That's what I'm hoping to have.
Thank you.
And we met with Mimi Haley this morning, and they are having an open house on Sunday.
Yes. Good.
Yeah, and this is a program that has been, you know, it's been carrying on in Portland. I can't remember his first name, but Dr. Mendenhall, who is, he's very knowledgeable. He started maybe the first one of Zoboxone treatment for alcoholism and opioid addiction. And it's very successful, and he knows what he's doing, and these people have worked with him. And it's just going to be like a regular clinic. These people aren't going to be hanging out there. That's what I think people were afraid of, that it would, you know, look bad, or they'd be doing bad things. But it's just a clinic. They go in, they get their medication, they get counseling, and then they leave. And it's going to save, what, $800,000 a year in travel expenses? That's a big chunk. Thank you to Seaside for welcoming them.
I'll say, since I've expressed concern that it's going to draw drug addicts from all over the state, we can see something. And I said, "We have plenty of them."
Yeah, I mean, it's a widespread problem, and it's something that we have to address. And what I had said about the overdoses in our county, but we are showing the greatest improvement of other counties. So while we were at the bottom as far as, or at the top, however you look at it, in numbers, we are showing the greatest improvement. And that's because of coordination in our county and, well, obviously with the city of Seaside too. But we have many good people working on this problem, and we are showing really good progress, not just for overdoses, but for treatment, for mental health. And we're doing much better. Well, if we're done talking about housing, we can move on to emergency preparedness? Or do we have something else?
Yeah, it's a little bit.
What?
The housing liaison.
Oh, okay.
And I would just like to note on the housing issue that here in Astoria, we're about to have some additional workforce housing. So the work on the Merwin has started in town, but we're going to have 30 workforce apartments out of 40. So these, if I remember right, the cost to live in one of these would be in the $400 to $600 range. So it really makes true workforce housing, so.
And where is this?
This is the Merwin, right next door to the City Hall. It's the old Merwin Hotel.
Oh, yeah.
Completely renovated that.
Yeah.
Again, it's an old building that at one point was about to be torn down, and innovative housing came in and looked at it and really worked hard to find ways to fund it and make this thing happen. And it has actually started, and I think that's going to make a really impact here in town.
That's wonderful. Very good.
Derek Taylor was beginning championing that building.
Championed the building.
Oh. Well, and preserving an old building, that's, that's ...
Right. It has so many great features to it.
That's a plus. Wonderful. So now, Mayor Jones?
Yeah, so this is a very late addition to the agenda. We had a, as most of you know, we have the Homelessness Solutions Task Force that the city of Astoria sponsors. It's a multi-agency group and multi-jurisdictional group. We have members from outside of Astoria as well. And most of the individuals, nonprofits, and agencies that deal with some aspect of homelessness are members and come to the meetings every two months. Chief Jeff Spalding has, was gracious enough to step up to be the chairman, I guess we'll say, leader of the group, and still is after two years. And we've achieved a lot in terms of, everybody knows what the other groups are doing, and shares ideas, and, you know, shares the concerns and the problems and the trends. So I think that we all have a little bit better awareness of what's happening. And hopefully, we've avoided a little bit of redundancy and reinventing the wheel. We are not an agent, the host is just a group of people that meet, though, to share information. It's not an entity with any authority. It doesn't have a funding stream. It doesn't have the authority to take any action. And that's frustrated some people that come to visit, but it is what it is. You know, we have not been funded to do things. We're funded to share information, as each entity within the host does things that are within their own purview. But one thing that's become apparent, you know, to everybody, it's if there was some overarching authority that could make decisions or take action on behalf of all of us, it would be a little more effective. And Chief Spalding found, the city of Gresham has a model that we watched a video and read a little bit about at the last meeting that seemed pretty effective, at least in their community. And so Chief Spalding got ahold of their job description that their employee has, and it's really about someone who has the ability to go out and identify, you know, as with most things, it's 10% of the people take up 90% of the effort and are 90% of the issue. And this individual in Gresham, you know, goes out in the field, goes out in the woods, goes to the camps, talks to people, knows who they are, figures out what their specific situation is, how they got to be homeless in their current situation, and tries to target assistance based on the individual needs of that person. And, you know, we talked about, it should be nice, all of us are on a table last week, like a table like this, said it should be nice if we had someone like that. Frankly, one person could never do that for the county. It would be too overwhelming. You need, you would need a minimum two, probably three people. But I've, so I've asked Chief Spalding to sort of give an overview of the presentation he gave us last week at the host, and maybe his ideas on how we can move forward. We don't have a formal proposal to be, you know, voted on. It's really just, the idea was, let's have some conversation and see, do the other jurisdictions within the county and the county itself have any interest in possibly sharing resources to create a few positions to be this countywide homeless liaison? Or does everyone just want to do their own thing within their own jurisdiction?
Can I ask a question?
Please.
I'm not fully aware of where the pockets of homelessness are and what they are. I, Astoria, I live here, I did. So what's the nature of the homeless population system?
Very much like it is here, largely the people that are living outside of shelters and that sort of thing are mental health issues, addiction issues, persons that are estranged from support. Helping hands in Seaside, and also here in Astoria, are really reaching people who want to see their lifestyle changed. But the really difficult demographic to work with are people who really don't want to get out of their home state.
Do you have any feel for the numbers?
It would be a wild guess, but I think in Seaside, because of Helping Hands, we've seen a reduction in the number of people that I would guess, living in the woods and in places, there's probably 50, 60 homeless.
So you have a same issue you do with people leaving outside the area, so?
Yeah, they camp. And now as the weather is changing, there's movement and people leaving, it's out of rent. It's going to be better living conditions where they camp. Mental health issues are, I think, the number one cause, and then self-education through alcohol and drugs, and the just plain little addictions that are ...
Gearhart, Cannon Beach, head?
I can speak to the city of Warrenton, since they're not here, because we meet regularly with chief workmen, and also because the county owns property out there, where there's often large camps out at the North Coast Business Park. But also, there's a significantly large camp back behind Goodwill that has a lot of police activity that happens, as well as back behind the Dollar Store and Dolphin back in that area. They do also have kind of the same sort of situation in regards to with the weather changing. A lot of the areas where some of these people are camping is in the wetlands. And so now that it's starting to rain more, they're kind of getting pushed out because the water levels aren't draining and such. And so he has said that they've also seen some people kind of heading south, but there's still some of those large clusters and camps of people.
Are they heading south to the Platte County, or are they ...
He didn't know where they were going exactly. He just knew that they were, he, you know, kind of like, it's raining a lot, and he's like, "Yeah, and it's not going to get any better." And so they've seen some people move on. But there are some people who have set up pretty significant and elaborate camps in some areas.
But Gearhart?
Yes, I have seen some homeless people in Gearhart. But the police are very good at getting them out of there. I don't know where they go. But yes, I have seen them. You know, one thing, I don't know if this is true for our county, but what I have read is that there's a lot more homeless people now due to economic problems, not necessarily opioid or addictions, but that's a segment too. But it's actually not as much mental health and addiction problems as we may think. They're economically insecure.
Those people are willing to accept services. We've seen that on the board of Helping Hands, and so I have some firsthand numbers there. In the last five years, we've seen a changing face of homelessness. A lot of single young men with children.
Yes.
Some elderly, single women, and even couples. And they're more than willing to come into the shelter here in Astoria and work toward getting transitional housing. Those people are not living on the street by and large. So, Mark?
I could be wrong, but I thought, and maybe Nell and Rick could clarify, but I thought I remember in the recent housing study, reading that Platte County had more unsheltered or homeless, people experiencing homelessness per capita than any other place in any other county in the state. So I don't know, and people, I mean, Portland obviously has a lot more homeless people, but they have a much larger population. But I thought I remembered reading that in the recent housing study that we got. And to reiterate Sarah Nebiker's point, it's, there's been a dramatic increase that sort of matches the cost of increase in living and housing as well. So, yeah, it's mental illness, of course, a lot of contributing factors towards the issue of homelessness, but I think cost of living is definitely one of them.
Yeah, and the people at the schools have also seen an increase in the, in those students who don't have a permanent health.
Yes, yes. And they have food, they have food insecurity. The age of people has gone down. Younger people are coming to the food pantries than used to come. Yeah. And the problem with, not just, they're economically insecure, but if you have been kicked out of a place that you were renting, it's really hard, because you didn't pay your rent, it's really hard for them to get back in to rent a place. Nobody wants to rent to them. So there's that issue too.
So why don't I ask Chief Spalding, if he'd give us a presentation?
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, well, before I start my presentation, I'll just make a quick comment, you know, just by the weird, crazy nature of homelessness, and I think we all share some of the same homelessness, we see, you know, our numbers seem to be down, they may get a little bit more. And it sounds like Seaside is sending a sum of yours if you're seeing, you know, that down day. But, you know, it's, the hard part is the count, you know, and I think it's every other year, point in time count. And, you know, so Platte Community Action can provide you those numbers too, if you're looking at it for the county. And I think they're coming up on doing one in January. I may have the dates wrong, but.
Usually happens at the Homeless Connect event.
Okay. So that's a good source for, to find out the amount of numbers. I will tell you that in Astoria, we started tracking, you know, the calls that we go to as a police department, and 2019, our calls are up over 300% over the previous year. So significant increases. And some of that is maybe more awareness and what have you, but clearly, there's been an increase. But I know that most of the other agencies I speak to have seen an uptick in the numbers as well, for any number of reasons. But getting back to the topic today, first, I do want to recognize that there are several members in the room that are actually part of the Homeless Solutions Task Force at the Mayor Mansions. We have a couple of our city councillors, Monica's part of the task force, the Commissioner Sullivan is. So again, I think we have a great group of people, and we've, you know, been meeting for the last two years. On some level, there may be some feeling that we haven't accomplished a whole lot, but we've had some really great discussions. We've listened to some really great guest speakers. And for me, the number one thing that's come out of the group is just that building and relationships. I know who I need to go to now, I need to talk to somebody. And I think that is, would be a comment that most people, that part of the group would say, that that relationship building is huge. Now, we're kind of getting to the point where we need to move forward and present some recommendations to our city council, which is one of the things that we were tasked with doing when the group started almost two years ago. So one of the ideas that recently surfaced as being, one of the most important things that we need is somebody that can communicate, or not communicate, coordinate all of the variety of services that are offered throughout the county. And we're finding that, you know, there's a lot of great work that's being done, there's a lot of government entities, social services, government entities, and what have you, that are all involved in addressing some of these issues. But we're not all necessarily working together as well as we could in terms of coordinating those types of resources. And I think the best way to characterize it is this quote from the Creating Systems at Work Program, which is part of the National Alliance to End Homelessness. And the quote goes, "To address homelessness, communities should take a coordinated approach, moving from a collection of individual programs to a community-wide response that is strategic and data-driven. Communities that have adopted this approach use data about the needs of those experiencing homelessness to inform how they allocate resources, services, and programs." And I think that kind of sums it up. And, you know, as we ... And, you know, as we were having this discussion, it was probably one of the better discussions we had in terms of, you know, coming up with an idea, having a discussion, and everybody at the end of the day was really energized and excited, saying, you know, this is really what we need. We need somebody. Or we actually got to a point where it was more than just one person, it started growing, you know, we started talking about, we need one person in the county somewhere that can coordinate this. And now we need several, you know, based on all the different types of things that we think this person could do. But again, some of the things that we see this person doing would be coordinating all the efforts from all the different agencies. There's all kinds of, you know, three-letter acronym agencies that I could name off, but most of you guys know who we're talking about. The other part of it is collecting data. We don't necessarily have really good data on the individuals and what their needs are. As a police department, we go out, we handle the call, and we deal with it the best we can, but we're not really digging deep enough to say, what does this person need? And necessarily directing that person to the services. This position that we're suggesting would be somebody that really is a boots-on-the-ground type position, that's going to go out and actually talk to people and can actually find out what people need. They're already going to be aware of all the different services available, actually direct people into those services. This individual would be developing a plan for the county, they could potentially research and write grants. And as the mayor mentioned before we started the conversation, is that if he's correct, probably 10% of the individuals we deal with cause 90% of our problems. But I'm talking with this law enforcement, I'm talking about all of our social services that are impacted by Classip, Beadare Health, our hospitals, and all the other social service agencies. And so one of the tenants of the program, that the mayor also mentioned, the Gresim, their position's called a homelessness service specialist. And one of the things I like that they do is they say the primary focus of the position is to engage the individual, connect them with the appropriate resources for shelter, healthcare, mental health, and addiction treatment services. With an objective resulting community dispute arising from destructive client activities such as city code violations and neighborly disservices, this position serves as a bridge between the community and the system of health and social services, and they initiate or enhance client access to needed relevant services. Now, there's a more focus on dealing with individuals that may be causing some more of the problems. I'm not necessarily suggesting that's what this is about. This position would be getting in touch with individuals who are using the different services, whether they're using the hospital services, whether they're using the CCA services, and directing them into the appropriate services. So if we can impact the ones that are generating, you know, using most of our resources, we think we can make the greatest impact. And again, this is just one suggestion of how we look at this position. We thought, you know, who could this position, I mean, who would actually be responsible for this position? And we haven't really worked out the finer details yet, and it was really felt that that wasn't all that critical as far as, nobody in there says, I think we have to have that person, you know, whether it's a county position, whether it's a city position, or whether it's a CCA said that they would be willing to host this person. But it was felt that if all the different entities were able to pitch in and provide financial resources to fund this position, it would probably be a minimal hit for each of the different impacted agencies that are affected by the problem throughout the county. I think to have just one person to handle whole county, I think might be stretching that first a little bit, you've been, so it might be, the initial problem might be to target it with a smaller area just to see how it works. Again, this is a little bit of a half-baked idea, and I normally wouldn't bring that, but it was timing of this meeting. We just had our meeting a little over a week ago, so we wanted to do a, you know, strike while the iron's hot. We do have a small subcommittee, three people involving Viviana from Classip Community and two others from our group that are kind of fleshing out some of the finer details. They're going to meet and come up with a, you know, recommendation, look at the Gresim position and others, and see, you know, what would make most sense for this camp. But we felt that this was a good opportunity to bring something like that to this group and get some feedback, and just see if this is something that could be supported, if it makes sense, and looking for other ideas. So with that, I'll just open up the questions or thoughts.
Sure. Is there any kind of guess about how much overlap there is with our veteran services officer? Because I know that sometimes veterans have problems.
Right.
But I don't know to what extent there would be overlap, so you might be able to piggyback and make some services and expand in front of here.
Yeah, and we actually, one of our guest speakers we did have is a gentleman that came out and spoke from the veteran services and spoke to our group too. And that was kind of a, you know, eye-opener, you know, an awareness, that thing, which was good too. And that's just one piece of the puzzle we need to connect to, this whole network, you know, this person would be connected to and be able to put people in the right place. And I'll mention too, that, you know, I, there are already individuals out there who are doing a lot of what we're describing. And even I talked to one of the gals from Classip, Beadare Health, and she said, well, you know, we kind of do some of that already. And I go, I understand that, but their resources are already taxed. And same with the CCA, everybody we've talked to, their resources are taxed. And again, I think we're doing a little bit of reinventing the wheel, and there is some overlap, but if we had someone that could coordinate all these different resources, and again, actually go out there and physically, you know, touch people and get the information to find out what they need, it could just make sense.
How does Gresim measure success?
You know, the program is relatively new. All I know is it's more anecdotal. I talked to the police chief there, and she said the program is working very well. I don't have any statistics in terms of, they see reductions in numbers or that kind of thing, but that is something that we definitely need to dig into.
There are a couple of videos available, a lot of Gresim, I think just Google Gresim, homelessness solutions, or some combination of words like that, you will be able to watch the videos pretty well.
Yeah.
Explain what they're doing and I'd be able to.
It's another model in Oregon that's doing well in Eugene, where a sworn officer working for the police department are three or four social workers.
Yeah.
That go with the sworn officer out to the site where there's a call or a concern, and rather than arresting that person, I am getting them to the social services that they need. So that's another model.
Chief, Chief Spalding?
Do you recall how long that video was?
Ten minutes.
Okay.
At least one of the two that the gentleman mentioned.
Okay, 'cause, oh, I was going to say, we could possibly pull it up.
I think we can.
We can pull it up just.
It's not a very long video. That would be worthwhile, I think.
Thank you. That's great.
I wonder, I think it sounds like a good idea to be, you know, we have different topics that, like AmeriCorps volunteers, or would you be thinking a higher-level person than someone just out of school, someone who has some services? I mean, what, have they given us any ideas about what type of background or expertise they need to cause? Is it just a caring person that's willing to educate themselves about what's available in the community? Or do they have to be actual grant writers, or?
I can tell you the Gresim, Gresim position is actually, I would say, salary is very competitive. And if you look at some of the qualifications, they're talking about case management methods, legal referral assessment, interviewing, patient-client advocacy, effective methods for presenting ideas. There's actually a whole big list. I don't want to go through the whole list, but it looks like some of the, I would almost put in the professional category, so definitely not a volunteer, somebody that has the skills, the interviewing skills, and, you know, maybe use the mediation-type things that the base scale.
You have to assess and ask the homeless.
I'm sorry.
To be able to have a wide range of abilities to the situation, they need to assess, to referral, to all that.
It would be a pretty unique person. I agree. The salary was somewhere around the $50,000 range per year. There was a range from like below 50s to 60-something. So it's, again, it's not an entry-level type position. It would be somebody that clearly has some skills.
I think you could probably start with somebody who has those qualifications that essentially be the head of the organization or the department, or whatever you want to call it, and then slowly build your team, you know, in a similar way like the lower Columbia Hispanic Council has done, where I think now they have five employees, one that manages volunteers, one, you know, a grant writer is easily a half-time position. But that is kind of how you build, and obviously, that takes time. But I think you would want to start out with somebody, especially if there was city or state or county funding being put into it, that had those types of qualifications. And then ideally, build a small team from there, based on how well the program is working. I'll also say too, that a lot of the feedback that I get, one of the challenges is that, well, I'm not sure who to call if I notice somebody, a certain type of behavior that's happening near my house, or, and, I mean, 300% increase, a lot of those calls directly go to Astoria Police Department, sometimes the emergency line. Sometimes they should, but I feel like their department ends up being kind of a catch-all or a triage, much like our ER does for trying to help this population. And so it's better to have time and resources.
I think this individual or group of individuals would be very interesting, and I think a lot of the time, there's such a need that I think.
Chief, I'm curious, being part of the discussion, were there any considerations for staying us, the resources that we have, and finding the existing agencies like CCA or something like that, and promising them the resources as well, giving them the authority to expand what they do into this position? So they're using somebody that already has some expertise to find the right person?
Right. And that was discussed, and that is a very realistic possibility. You know, I think everybody feels that this position or positions is so important, nobody's digging their heels and taking pride in ownership and saying, I have to have this person in my agency. I definitely don't feel that way, and I have a purpose in county or anybody else does. And matter of fact, it's, you know, with the exception, I talked to Viviana from, you know, CCA, and she goes, you know, I think we could house that person and make it work out of here, you know? And that may make total, again, if there's the funding for it, the reason we initially didn't, you know, targeting one particular entity is because we know everybody's busy, everybody has limited resources, everybody's stretched pretty tight as it is. So to, you know, ask somebody to take on this burden, and also it's felt that if, you know, you're part of one agency, and that agency is also one of the key components, you know, you may be favoring that one more than any other agency out there. Although, in this example, Classip Community, clearly that's their main focus, or is one of the focuses, is homelessness topic. But you're right, it could easily be done by any one of the existing agencies. And, you know, as long as there's, you know, funding from, again, like, you know, CNH, you know, where they're going to, you know, they spend lots and lots of money on this problem, and, you know, if they're willing to pitch in to help alleviate it, you know, and lots of other people in Astoria, you know, to be very effective.
Here's a suggestion. Perhaps we should go back to our councils and commissions and see if the cities would be willing to buy in. Perhaps it could be an agenda item at your next meeting. We could see if there's a will to do something like this. I don't know, maybe it's premature, but might be worth considering.
I would volunteer myself or anybody from our team, our task force, to go and speak to the councils too, if that would be helpful.
That would be very helpful. Yes, having a presentation is always helpful, well, for the commission anyway.
Yeah, and I think if you're going to go forward with this and to the different councils, et cetera, it does sound a little bit premature, I think, coming, getting sort of a clear sense of just what we've been talking about here. What kind of, what is that individual? What kind of qualifications? Is it smarter to go with Classip Community Action or with the county? Is the county even interested in taking on and creating a staff position? Just kind of get some of these ideas out there clarified and then bring it out. I think it's a, I think it's a great idea, because, you know, whenever this stuff, as this stuff has come to the Astoria City Council, you know, we, that's why we have a homelessness task force, because we don't have funding to do any things to really do anything, period. And so this is just a way that we could at least be addressing it. So I think this is a really great spot to come through, because that's really is what is needed. Somebody who can actually coordinate and reach out at the same time will really, could really make a difference. So I'm all for going forward on something like this, and it moves us in the right direction, because it does have so many facets, from alcohol, drug, mental illness, to economic, to being children that you don't see, you know, they're couch surfing. There are so many aspects that we need to be able to reach out to, so.
We can, we can go ahead and, if you want to.
And then I'll just say that the group of three, the subcommittee, that's basically what I pass on, that puts somebody on the ball, you know, come up with some recommendations. And you're exactly right, that, that's what I'd like ultimately take to the different councils and committees.
Thank you.
The position, the specific question is taken, and we're compassionate and affirming, right? That is all that works. We are here to help, but we are also need to send a message that camping is not okay. A person who's camping is just never going to get their needs met, right? And so we're here to try to break that cycle once and for all and get them into stable housing. Oftentimes, a lot of the campers, or say, the root cause of how they end up in a situation is a history of trauma, right? Is they've had a very complex history that oftentimes we know nothing about when we first meet them. And so you have to remember that, you know, that there could be a very specific reason why they ended up in that situation, right? And so this is how we approach that situation, is work with them, give them hope again, and, you know, let them know that there's something better out there, so.
On a case-by-case basis, when a resident reports a problem, does one resident see somebody camping when they're not supposed to be camping, or they see someone in need who needs immediate response, they're going to find that our homeless services team is very quick to respond. They'll be out there usually within an hour. And from what I've seen, Gresim residents are both understanding that this is an issue that's going to take some time to solve, but they're also very appreciative when we have this immediate or near immediate response. They know that we're working quickly and hard, and we're taking these concerns very seriously.
This is right where the first tent was, and then there's a lot further, about 20 yards, was the large camp filled with 41 cars full of debris. So this is what it looks like now. This is two days later.
You can imagine what kinds of quality life you have with drinking and swearing and all types of things going on all night long, the dogs are set off. And then, when, this was back in the, in the summer, when it was so dry, we had fires started at night and then you worry about catching the whole forest on fire. Finally, it was getting so bad that two of our neighbors went down and personally met with Kevin, who had just come two weeks before. And he said, "Come out this afternoon, get some people together and I'll talk with you." And churn, I'd be damned. From there on, things began to happen that what they were ready to take, you had to get worked through, but he kept us informed and we really appreciated it because now instead of just talk, we had action.
Very successful, we've always led with compassion in this issue. Our residents want to be very compassionate, but they also want to protect their mobility and they want to protect their neighborhoods and we've held the line very firmly on the ability and we've equally held it as in compassion, helping people. And we've housed over 100 people just in the last six, seven months. The Springwater Trail, our portion of the neighborhood is completely clear. I monitor it four times a week and I know lots of our residents are, they appreciate that, they love that they're using it as the amenity that it's supposed to be and not a crime trail, which is what it once was. So we're thankful that we've been able to get out in, on the trail, protect it, protect our mobility and reportedly give people the much-needed help that they, that they need and are requiring to help themselves. One thing that we have doubled down on, our group has, and that is their just absolute tenacity to help people. They know most of the people in the city that are homeless, they know by name, they know their story and they're just doggedly trying to help them to get the help that they need and I think that's where we're starting to see some great success in the community.
Zerafat Kitchen and Pantry is a nonprofit in the Gresham area that serves hot meals six days a week and has a food pantry that is open five days a week. We were getting complaints from neighbors about the clients who come and dine here and about litter in the community and in the city of Gresham. He has been invaluable in helping us resolve the issues with litter, with the issues with clients who are not behaving according to our code of conduct and he has also helped to build strong partnerships between the city of Gresham and the Zerafat Kitchen and Pantry and the police force. So we have become a lot more self-sustaining based on Kevin's input, on the best way to deal with our issues and he comes here literally almost every day of the week and provides advice and provides guidance and helps our clients find housing.
So we have all these resources lined up and ready for the individuals ready for change. The other ones, we're kind of on the fence, we just continue to work with on a daily basis and help in another way. So I just got off the phone, we're again, he's signing the papers, he's moving in today. We found people who don't have household items and I'm gonna help him move in at 3:00 PM while the third one comes up. He's providing advice, he's helping me, I reached out to him. Did the same thing, right? The same evening, here we have our handle, and we're in two days later and we do the first workout. And I did not think this was possible, I'm here about this possible.
Thank you, and thank you to our clerk of the board, Teresa, for bringing that up. That, that's very inspiring, it's wonderful.
Can I just add one thing too? And, you know, video is somewhat of a narrow focus of what we envision as this position. This is very, you know, this person is assigned to Gresham Police Department, is actually city-employed, a part of the police department, and I think it's great what they're doing. And we recognize that oftentimes, you know, sometimes it takes enforcement activity to get people into services too. We're not out there to, you know, arrest people and place people, even though sometimes that happens, but we also know that the, we have limited ability to keep people in bail and that really isn't all that effective anyway. So if we can find ways to get people into services, this is one way to do it. But this will be just one aspect of what we are suggesting, at least in the early stage and so is, there's lots of other pieces to this, just one little piece, this isn't all what this one person, you know, just some put resources together.
Thank you. So.
Well, the advantage I see to it is now when you're, when you're dealing with homeless issues, so many times it's some department has to kind of go take, take away from their normal day-to-day job that they already are fully employed 40 hours a week or more doing and then go deal with this one issue, just to have one person or one group of a couple people who they can, every day, you know, eight hours a day, five days a week, they can focus just on dealing with issues surrounding homelessness and have it not take away from their full-time job because that is their full-time job. I think that would be a huge help to all the agencies like the police department and like CCA and like the warming center and Helping Hands.
So is it, is it premature to ask if the cities would consider this as an agenda item to partner with cities and the county as a whole? To fund something like this?
I'd like to see a little bit more research done. I've worked with a homeless count in urban areas, but I have no knowledge about whether it's been done in work.
It's through the census.
Um, yes. But I don't know if the cen, isn't the census based on addresses?
No, they, they also, they try to.
The dicentio is based on addresses and also locating people. So they do go into homeless shelters, but that's every 10 years.
Well, no, they do it, they do it in between as well, it's my understanding and.
ACS, American Community Survey, it's where you get most of your demographic information in the cities, counties and states and ACS is based only on street addresses.
Well, I worked on the census for two periods and it was, I was taught that in between, people do go out and try to enumerate and also, well, we have a 2020 coming up.
Yeah, that's the.
And, right, but they were also doing it in between and they do go to, they do try to find people who don't have an address. At least that's the way it was done.
Tino works for them, so I think she's probably, well, I work, yeah, at the Census Bureau with the American Community Survey, so, and it's two separate streams if you, if you dicentio.
Well, we know that different agencies take this on in different areas. My wife used to work for Clackamas County and Clackamas County, every year, they did at least one, one homeless count and I think they're trying to get a couple of homeless counts as well, where they, they gather a lot of volunteers and they go through the weeds and they look wherever they can and find people and, but it's, it takes resources, you know, and again, it's hard to get those really thorough counts periodically, but you mentioned that we have, with the.
The Homeless Connect, we do it once a year and that's when classic community action tries to do their point-in-time count.
Right, so every year we at least get that, that information. So we, there is some information out there and you'll see it reported occasionally in the paper that they'll list all that. That's where, that's where you get that awareness of all the people that you don't see, all the students, all the people that are living with somebody else because they can't, they've lost their home, they're not on the streets, but they are very close, so.
The Homeless Connect is a wonderful, a wonderful way to reach out, but it does depend on people coming in and you always have that situation where a lot of people don't know about it, even though Sunset Empire Transification does greet us that day, a lot of people, they don't take the initiative to come in.
Sure.
Even though there's, there's a lot of remorse for coming in. So I don't think we're really seeing the full count of our homeless.
Right, even when they do a good job, they don't get a full count. It's just hard, it's just hard to get to all those people, so you're, but you'll get numbers and you can figure that there's, you know, just tack on, so.
Getting back to the question at hand, should we bring this to our respective local governments? We know there are a number of homeless individuals in the county. I've spoken with Alan Evans and I believe the figures he's used are 600 to 1,000 and Rick Bowers and Mel Moffick can speak to that better. So I think merely to bring this to, say, our city council or the county commission, we don't necessarily need to have an exact number, but I foresee this as just asking each of our local bodies, would we be open to considering sharing funding for such a position? Or perhaps two positions, because we're all paying for it now, you know, the police response, various other responses. So I just kind of want to get this going so we don't drag our heels too long.
I need to be a naysayer because I believe in doing something, but my other issue is to hear them say that they placed 100 people in the space of a year.
Six months.
Wow, there are not 100 places in classic county to put people. You take someone off the street, you have to put them somewhere and we don't have the places to live.
Actually, we have the places, it's just, we're not, we're not poor in housing, it's what people will do with them. So maybe it's the same thing, what you're saying.
Well, I think it's exactly what I'm saying because, I mean, we might have an empty house in here or a spot of bed, but we're not gonna take homeless people.
But wouldn't such a person be able to hook up some people with the proper services that they need so that they can get back on their feet? Or they may not know about CCA and the housing, I always get them mixed up.
No, that part, I think is correct. I guess I would think that our problem is so huge that until we start looking for places for people.
But they're never gonna start.
That, but not the way you mean it. I think the problem is so huge, so complex and we don't have enough services, we don't have enough housing, so we kind of get to the point where we can't do anything.
Exactly.
And I think the value of this idea is that people need some focus and through that focus, maybe we find out what the priorities are as, as a group for the county or for all the cities so that we actually have enough, enough focus to be able to take action instead of what we're not doing now. And maybe we can identify some ways to develop housing and so on, given the information that the person might just bring into us and give the focus that would bring for us.
Yeah, and just to reiterate that, I mean, we have quite a bit of data in the city of Astoria from the various department heads about how this issue has impacted not just the police department, but also the fire department. We have data from our, our local hospital, parks and rec as well. So we know that it's taxing our departments with, with duties and jobs and resources when, like Mayor Jones was saying, they're already stretched thin, so they're already working their full-time plus jobs. And so I do think, I mean, it's, it's kind of a straightforward equation where if you, if you've seen an issue increase, which we definitely all have, even with the data that the department heads have provided, you have to have staff or resources to be able to absorb that and nobody is going to be able to do this kind of work as strictly as a volunteer or unpaid position, in my opinion, because it's, I mean, as you can see, that's just a snapshot of it, but it's such challenging work.
Sarah, I would, I'd like to respond to your question. Let's see, sorry, I have to speak to my fellow person at the council, but number one, Chief, thank you for the work that you've done and committed, I think it's amazing work. What we need to know is more bones on that, so. And we'd love to have you come to our council, make a presentation, talk to us about how we could partner with the rest of the jurisdictions and to give us some numbers to that and then I think we would be more than glad to be able to listen to you. Come and tell us more.
Right, right.
Mr. Mayor, what I heard you say was develop a prototype pilot project that can go through an iterative process around the county, because I think you're right, now is the time, it's October, it's time. Get some data, word analysis, paralysis, if you're a small group, perhaps you got people working on, so if you can define a proposal, shop it around, take feedback, I mean, I really think that there is community will and momentum. I think it also needs to include what the alternatives are when you can't help the person be successful, they don't want to change their behaviors. Several years ago, at Legal Work in Cities, we had someone from their veterans department in the city of Bend, made a very successful program for helping veterans become, go from homelessness to some sort of shelter, some sort of home. And one of the things he was very honest about was the ones that refused the help because they didn't want to go into a place that had four walls and a roof, because they didn't want to change their behavior. And I won't forget the one he said, that he went every day to visit this one man and the man said, "This is my freedom, this is what I want to do." So I think we need to be prepared on how do we handle those alternatives.
Well, my, you know, my response to that is that, and I don't have any numbers, but if we have this population of homeless people that right now maybe 20% are getting some sort of services, if that, if we can make that 50%, we've made a big cut because there will be all those people that, that won't come into services, but there are people that are, would like to get the services, but they don't know how or they've been frustrated by trying to enter and then finding little roadblocks that just make them wander away. And that's where having this dedicated person to kind of help. Classic Behavioral Health has this little program, they have the rah-rah girls.
Yes.
And the rah-rah girls get out there and they're assigned, they, they have a whole bunch of people, they're full-time and they latch on to individuals that need help and they sit down with them and they encourage them and help them and tell them what they can do with, you know, and, and they're really just, it's really upbeat and they'll keep showing up over and over again, they don't go away until you tell them to go away. So, you know, it really makes a difference. Mary Dougherty, who, when she latches on to an individual, she does only one really basic, simple thing for the most part, she gets people who don't have IDs, IDs, so that they can take that next step. So it's, it's being able to do all these little things in some coordinated fashion in a better way, we can be, we can be successful.
Part, oh, did you have something?
I was just gonna.
I was just going to offer to to Chief Spalding and and to the group is that if the county staff can be helpful as kind of a sounding board as you work through this, we would be happy to do that, because I think there's some staff work that can can really tee this up for the elected officials as you go out. And so let us know how we can plug in to that effort and 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 really help you and be a catalyst in getting this shaped, so.
I appreciate that, no, thank you.
Good.
You know, you meant when you mentioned ID, it made me think of, there were several women that I was talking with, and they were very frustrated about homeless people not being able to get ID. And what they were saying to me is, why can't there be a building where people who are homeless, where all it has is lockers, and it has an address, because you can't get ID without an address, and you can't hit this without ID, and and that kind of thing. Now, that's sort of off-the-wall idea has stuck with me, just a place where somebody can have an address and have a locker that they can put things in, or they can get their mail in, that kind of thing, because that's a, that's one small step towards a lot of things.
Something that, something that was brought up about the Ra-Ras, and this is something that was conceived of, I believe, by Amy Baker.
Ra-Ras?
Yeah. And the, what we saw in this video and what happens with the Ra-Ras is basic connection. And what she is finding, what we are finding, is that just having these basic connections with people makes a huge difference. And what they talked about, these people have trauma, and the CCO is looking at trauma-informed care, expanding into that, I mean, they've been talking about it for a while, but I think they're really gearing up, and I think there's funding. All of these pieces make a difference, and I know the county is doing a lot for this, and coordinating, I think, is a good idea. And partnership.
I know we have another item on the agenda, but I just wanted, what strikes me about this is, if you've ever had somebody in the hospital and you recognize how valuable it is to have a family member there to advocate for that person who's in a vulnerable position. And I think that's the, that's what what we're advocating for here, is anybody that's out on the streets, I don't care what the reason is, they're off balance in a way that somebody who has a home and security is not, and so they're vulnerable. And so if there, if we can get somebody to come about, like like Commissioner Necker said, that will connect with them and advocate for them, that that seems like a powerful thing to have, and I think that will bring some people and decrease suffering, and that's that's kind of what we need to be working on, of course.
And, you know, let me be frank, this isn't just about helping homeless people, because we're all kind, wonderful people. This is about helping our communities. This is about helping the small business owners who have complained that their business is impacted by the people that are loitering in front of their businesses and harassing customers. This is about helping the 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 people who email me and complain they never walk in the Riverwalk again anymore because they're scared, because they've been accosted too many times. It's about helping citizens who have said their property values are going down because there's people camping in the woods right behind their house, started fires, and and they're and they're scared to go walk in the woods anymore. So it's about helping the community as well. It's not just about being nice, trying to help homeless people because we're nice people. It's it's both, it's both of those things equally.
Thank you for for pointing that out, and all you have to do is go to California, go to Sacramento, go to San Francisco, go to some of these areas where it's, I mean, this this problem can grow and grow and grow. We have an opportunity, I think, to try to slow it down and help people and help our community.
Have clear boundaries to support neighborhood livability, community livability. I mean, I heard the sideboards in there. So I'm really looking forward to hearing the folks.
Thank you, I appreciate all the support.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor Jones, for doing, for bringing this up.
Yeah, thank you.
I'm sorry, I almost skipped over you.
It's going all right.
Okay, so shall we move on?
I'm going to leave some cards here, so if anybody has any questions or when we get ready to start scheduling, thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so I will move on to emergency preparations, preparedness.
Good evening. I want to thank you for making emergency preparedness a topic during this event. It is a shared responsibility of all the jurisdictions, and I appreciate the opportunity to talk to all that needs shared ideas. I'm just going to, I'm going to try to keep it brief tonight, if you want to take a little longer, you can. I've got a few items to go over. I'm going to talk a little bit about Preparedness Month, which is just behind us. I'm going to talk about some of the progress we've made with the city-county initiatives around emergency management, and then I'm going to talk about some opportunities to get involved in the upcoming short session with the legislature, with some issues that have come, that are being revisited, that we that we heard about in the spring, and some opportunities that are available. So September was Preparedness Month, and it's always a busy month for us. We saw a little shift in outreach this year. We've seen a downturn in personal preparedness events, the Northwest Natural Event, even getting invited into people's homes and to personal events, but we saw an uptick in businesses preparing their employees. So for the month of September, we had a few outreach events that were not so well-attended, but we provided outreach materials for all 650 employees at Columbia Memorial Hospital, 200 employees for the Clatsop Care District, most recently employees of the city of Astoria. And so it was just a little different. Back to personal preparedness, things have gotten a little stale. You know, we have these events, it seems like the same people show up. I imagine certain people in our community that have an entire file cabinet full of preparedness materials, because we see them every time. And so we had a Northwest Natural Event in Astoria, we had a full day at Warranton, and we had an event at Jewel School. There were about 20 or 30 people at each of those events. So that's a call to action for us to figure out how to engage people in a different way, in a new way. I spent the 21st during the Warranton event traveling to Lincoln County to look at their preparedness event. And next year, what we're going to propose is that Northwest Natural, Clatsop County Emergency Management, and the SERV teams partner to do a countywide expo, possibly out of Camp Leal, that's very robust, and they'll bring in those people who feel like they've seen it all. So I hope to talk to you about that down the road. Along the same lines of getting the message out in innovative ways, I mentioned this when we met in the spring, we have a sort of a headliner speaker coming in November, he'll be at the Liberty Theater on Friday the 22nd, and he's at the Convention Center on the 23rd, and I'll get any flyers out soon on that. His name's Steve Everline, and he's been featured on TED Talks, and we have him here for a Friday night and Saturday morning, and we're hoping to get people to the table. If you haven't seen him, get on YouTube tonight and watch his video.
What is his name again?
Pardon? Pardon, Steve Everline.
Thank you.
He started a company called Tipping Point Resilience. He actually experienced an earthquake firsthand and brings that knowledge to the table and really talks a lot about inaction in communities and why he thinks that happens, and he's very engaging, so. So we started the city-county meeting at the beginning of the year, city managers said that they would meet with emergency management every other month, and on the alternating months, we worked on some projects. We were successful in acquiring a couple of grants this year. We were successful in securing an agreement for shared use of the MAPS notification system between all the cities in the county. We're working together on the natural hazard mitigation plan, we have the five cities in the county, as we have in the last two iterations. We also have 12 special districts that have come on this time around. I was at Oregon Emergency Management Association Conference this week, drove directly here today from there, and and we will be one of the first counties in the state to be bringing in those special districts for hazard mitigation. Let's see, things that we have coming up. We are finalizing the tsunami wayfinding, finishing out all of the signage in the county and creating a GIS database to catalog those signs, that we can maintain that system moving forward. Our community development department just secured a grant for improvements to facility wayfinding. That grant has historically been used for signage, but because we sort of got that low-hanging fruit with this grant, we're hoping to move on to those assembly areas, those places on the tsunami inundation maps that are simply high-ground in this case, and to start looking at how we can develop those. We get a lot of questions about where our citizens are going, and at this point, they're just going to high-ground, so it's exciting to think about that next step, where we can look at at developing those areas. Last thing about Preparedness Month, this is hot off the press, I think you have brought it, if I thought you had it already. This is a new version of Living on Shaky Ground, that's a document that you're probably all familiar with. I still have old versions, if you if you like that one, but this is a new iteration that was put out over Oregon Emergency Management with the Companion Pocket Plan. I brought a case of each over there, so please take as many as you like from your front counter and take to your next council meeting or whatever. I have a lot more, too, if your city staff wants to get in touch and and get some more. So the last item has to do with some legislative issues that are left over from the spring that will be reappearing during the short session. And two or three of them have to do with emergency management, and I'm going to talk about the first two, because we have an opportunity to provide input in advance of that effort. The governor notified us last week that they are convening a coastal resilience work group, and they contacted the county emergency managers and other folks in the community to say, we want to convene three meetings down the coast in the fall to get feedback on three three important issues. Maximizing the public safety of Oregon residents and visitors following a tsunami event on the Oregon coast, ensuring the resilience of public infrastructure in coastal communities while limiting impacts on economic development, and providing local communities with certainty regarding the tsunami line, building regulations, and community planning. You guessed it, Hospital 3309. So 3309 passed and repealed the tsunami inundation law that prohibited construction of critical facilities in the inundation zone. For those who are familiar with that with that law, it didn't have a lot of teeth. It said that you you shall not build critical facilities, but if you really need to, such as Gearhart and other other communities who have shared considerations around the first responders, please talk to us first and come up with mitigating measures. So the the law was repeal, putting in its place, and this upcoming effort is to come up from behind and and provide the communities with something.
So Tiffany, can I?
Yes.
Give a little more detail on that? So are they actually planning to have a bill for the short session? That would be.
They are. The Oregon State Science Policy Advisory Commission, of which I am a member, has wrote a letter to the legislature in advance of 3309 recommending that they repeal the law, the HB 379 law, but that they replace it with the American Society of Civil Engineers 716 code and new inundation regulations. The law was repealed, and the letter wasn't received in time, and so it just happened without that other piece. This is the companion piece coming around. And what I would like to propose, it's not necessarily for me to get into a discussion about it, but that I follow up, this all happened very quickly, the meeting in Clatsop County is next Friday, October 18th. So let's have any discussion we might, but I think I would propose that I send some correspondence to your city managers tomorrow, certainly the issue up in a little more comprehensive way, and and soliciting feedback on the issues. So the first is HB 3309. The OSPAC has made a recommendation to implement, I'll provide that letter, 716, but there are some issues around the MAPS. Which MAPS are they using? Are they using the AUCED MAPS, or are they going to use the Dagoni MAPS? And so those are some issues that I'll that I'll talk more about.
I'm glad you shared that, because some reporter called me this morning, he wants to interview me tomorrow, to ask how mayors feel about 3309 and building in tsunami zones. And so it's nice to know it's going to be revisited, potentially, in the next session.
Why is it important for you to talk about it? Well, because it takes the former law, which didn't have a lot of provisions to start with, and splits the responsibility between the state and local governments. The state is saying, well, it's not a building code that doesn't tell your citizens where they can build, it just tells them that if they're building in a inundation zone, they must build city standards. The other piece is for your community development department to come around, develop a tsunami inundation line, like our community development department attempted to six years ago, like Gearhart is currently doing in several communities down the coast. That provision allows communities to say where things can or cannot be built. It also allows, has nothing to do with building construction, it has to do with if you're if you're a developer, putting development out in Clatsop Plains, it requires that you have wayfinding, it requires that you make provisions that that keep those people safe. So so it's a, it's not a complex issue, but it's relatively complicated, and so I will post some information and maybe post some questions that would be effective in soliciting feedback.
Okay, interesting. Maybe that, I'm.
There are, we're, we're present in the meeting, and I'm not completely sure of all the, I can send you the list of people that I, that I, I'll put on the website.
So this is, I proposed, have a working group that there?
It is. So Amira Streeter, the governor's office, is is heading up the effort, and there is a meeting in Clatsop County in October, in Newport, November, and Old Beach in December. The key issues that they're that they're talking about, and they're looking for input on the alternative tsunami standard and building code regulations, following passage of 3309, reviewing the OSPAC proposal for replacing that repealed law with the AUCED standards, identifying financial funding sources, examining how Oregon could update data around tsunami risk and safety. And I think that gets to the tourist population, that sort of a good problem we talk about all the time, that we have funding based on our population, yet our population swells with regularity. And the last, supporting state initiatives on family preparedness. The governor has a two-week ready campaign that she's rolling out, and elsewhere in the state, they're saying two weeks, and on the coast, we're saying finally, let's say three. And so this says, supporting state initiatives, but what I hear is, what does this look like for the coast? We know what it looks like for everyone else, but this is, this is the legislature and the governor's office saying, getting ready to roll out this program. What do you need from it to make it a coastal program?
One of the things that I've talked to several, a lot of our partners, is unitarizing the message, so that, you know, when Newport recognizes their safety, you know, it's the same Oregon's happening all around the Denver coast, so it looks like the Oregon coast is active, and I don't, you know, as it is, it's higher than that of everybody else, we're trying to hedge up, everybody else is doing different things. It would be really nice to have this kind of group, give us some, to look at, interact and ask the problem.
If I were to add on to that, working in hospitality, I know, I think it was C-Side that came up with the key cards, and you open them up, and and visitors came, and they were worried there were tsunami earthquakes, but it's kind of like a choice, and I don't know if that should be a choice. that came up with the key cards, and you open them up and visitors came and they were worried that there was a tsunami, pretty quick, so. But it's kind of like a choice, and I don't know if that should be a choice. I mean, I think that, you know, what I heard over the years, we don't want to scare anybody. But we also have people come in and say, "Well, what do we do?" And I just read this New Yorker article. So is there, if we're going to unify the message, is that infringing on people's rights prior to business owners, or is it the public good to inform them that if we have something come onto this establishment, this is what it takes back, this is what we're...
I think that's a personal concern, but I think culture is shifting. I think 10 years ago, the let's not scare them narrative was more appropriate, but I think we're seeing now that there are some early adopters, and they're getting positive reinforcement for providing that education. So we can look at the people's role.
There is actually a big construct, I think, by saying, come to the Oregon council and be saying, it's actually a market tool rather than a need. So when C-Side is done, there are a couple of articles that are being rejected, probably. I know Manzini is kind of making that part harder, so.
So any, any, any and all ideas like this are good, and I think the governor's office is an opportunity for us to create that continuity through the coastal meetings. I know a lot of county emergency managers are planning to try to make all three meetings to help with that effort, so. So one of the meetings, by the way, for the directors or the public, they are, this is all I have so far, and they are coastal resilience work group meetings, yes.
Jennifer's trying to say something.
So I would be participating in a little bit of that. Yes, but unfortunately, I'm going to be out of the country for the one in our region. So I'm thrilled to know that you are going to be there, and I'll follow up with you out of words. My counterpart from the midcoast is going to try to attend on my behalf, but I'll be participating in all three, representing regional solutions. So yeah, great to make that connection. And I'm in the governor's office, and Tiffany has more information than I do. So yes, it has come together very rapidly, and there's limited information, but I think there will be an opportunity to sort of represent and bring the information back and forth, given that it's just the three of us.
What's OSPAC?
OSPAC is the Oregon State Seismic Policy Advisory Commission, and they develop and influence policy at the level of state level. They advise the governor and the legislature on matters regarding seismic safety. Last year, our project was to develop a mass care report for the state, a seismic retrofitting report, that was the email last year. And this year, we're working on a report of recommendations regarding seismic safety at all the CEI hub in Portland, which is the third topic I was going to bring up. Now, it's not part of this roadshow, and it's not something that will probably be discussed during that work group, but I just attended, I was part of a panel this morning discussing what on the CEI hub at the Oregon Emergency Management Association Conference, and I just want to talk about it for a few minutes. I think you may see legislation in the short session on the CEI hub, the OSPAC's, that have to make recommendations regarding mitigation, regulation, potential projects for shake alert, and remediation of liquefiable soil. Why is that our issue? Well, it's our issue because 95% of Oregon's population gets their fuel from the CEI fuel hub, and the other 5%, pardon? CEI? Critical energy infrastructure hub. And yes, and so it's the tank farm. It's the tank farm in Portland, right. And so, but today, we listened to the panel talk about the CEI hub and the efforts that are going on in Portland. It's important because of how we get fuel for Portland. It's a very unsophisticated environment. It simply receives fuel and distributes fuel. There's no refinery, as you know, we're pretty limited in Oregon. But as they talk about the magnitude of the spill in the event of a catastrophe, it's impossible not to think about the impacts in Clatsop County. So I'm not going to get into the details. I don't know what the recommendations are or what the building, which will look like. I simply ask you to keep an ear open, because today, we talked, I talked to a man who works closely with EPA, who talked about the Exxon Valdez just being nothing compared to what we'd be looking at. He said, "I saw your hovercraft demonstration, I wonder what that would look like."
You mean with your biter or his?
Much bigger. And he said, "The hovercraft demonstration was great, I wonder what that would look like if your beaches were covered with oil." So it will be coming down there. They predict one day along you and five days to the mouth of the Columbia. So as you see legislation that talks about the CEI hub, even if it seems like another place, because they're talking about their decrease in dependence on liquid fuel and making solutions that are applicable to the coast, be mindful of the impacts that it will have on us if there's a catastrophe.
Well, it's not just the pollution, it's access to fuel. So the fuel all gets to the CEI either by pipeline from Washington or by tank fuel barges that come across the Columbia River and go up to Portland in an offload. And so if the river's closed after the earthquake and pipelines are ruptured, I'd be less worried about the pollution than just the fact that there won't be fuel available to distribute, because the product in Portland, I think, is all refined.
That's the focus of that. And I, and that will continue to be the focus, is the response piece of it, but the environmental piece is inextricably linked to that. And so, and longer lasting.
Well, except that it's not, what's in Portland, unless I'm mistaken, it's all refined product. It's not crude oil, because as you said, there's no refinery. So what comes into Portland is refined product. It dissipates much quicker. It's not crude oil, it's not, you know, black gunk that's going to be on our beaches, it's gasoline that's going to come in, or killing lots of aquatic life, but it's not as catastrophic as crude oil.
More short term.
Short, more short term, yeah.
Any more questions?
In the interest of speaking with a lot of voice, Bruce and I, what's your recommendation about what we should say to a reporter who says, "What's your position on 13309?"
I think, I think what I would say now is that the state is preparing to meet with local officials to talk about, about the different, HB 3309 simply got rid of the law. And so what you could say about 3309 is that it's a good step forward in terms of enacting something that provides local communities with a starting point for development in the tsunami inundation zone. We have about six times the buildings and six times the people. We have the buildings and people of all the other counties, coastal counties combined. So this is a big issue for us. We have the largest amount of developable land in the tsunami inundation zone, and so it is an issue that is still in Clatsop County.
There is that one area.
Did there any of yours?
I hope there's one.
Would you mind sharing what you said?
I haven't spent the last minute to get it backwards. They should have this solution before they got rid of the rule they had.
That would, you know, and that would have been an idea when we met to talk about the work group. There was a lot, there are a lot of unhappy people when the law passed, but I think as the dust settles, my takeaway is that a lot of it stemmed mostly from people feeling like the situation didn't occur at a time that it should have, and that even all of those people that maybe were at odds at the time are looking at the same path forward, or at least looking to link arms and come up with a solution. I'll be honest with you, I would have liked to have similar conversation ahead of time, but I'm not sure people would have had it. I think we could have said, "Hey, let's talk about the tsunami inundation line," and I'm not sure we would have gotten the whole participation that we're getting now discussing it before I had it.
I have another issue. Captain, please help me to help us with more directly. At the Oregon Emergency Conference, the mayor's session, it was a full morning session. I was entirely emergency, entirely dedicated. Chris did an excellent presentation, always best. But what Mayor Dalton wanted to try and question was, what do local officials do? They're not just... The director came out and said, "They take them away from the local officials' class," which was about four, eight or something. That's not on this anymore, it's not in yet, or cleared out. He basically, it's a party courses. But that doesn't have a place for a collective officials. And a simple question we were able to ask was, where do we stay when the press comes to us? Because they're going to come to us first, and we're going to say, "Oh, if something's happened, please talk to my police chief, you can argue." But it would better to have at least a little bit of an overview of what a local official was supposed to do about this situation. And granted, I've taken that...
Senior officials workshop?
Yeah, senior workshop a couple times. Surprisingly, they go a lot different. So, but it would be better to actually work on a special curriculum that we could take that's focused on Clatsop County, so that if it's a fire or a flash somewhere, or, you know, something that happens in Astoria, and they come down and ask me about it. But just so we have something like that, and let's sort things out, could be more common.
Right, that's great. I know, I know even about this senior officials workshop being different from anyone who's delivering it, takes, delivers it, a consultant delivers it. One of the things that we are planning to do this fall is take that workshop environment one step further and couch it in a tabletop exercise, which is just a fancy name for an in-depth discussion. And I think when we do it that way, we can ride our own scenarios and not rely on that Columbia City, which comes close to being one of our aims, but as you see it in every FEMA document. And we've been performing a lot of tabletop exercises this year, I think we're on our 14th. And I'm always struck by how we could take this almost topic and really, and really get a broad discussion about that. So that might be something that you consider. Manzini just asked if we would come down and facilitate something with our city staff following those lines.
Well, that was very well received as a concept with all the mayors and everybody in the room, who was, it was a well received concept, because they're looking to us, Clatsop County and Clatsop County has ultimately accomplished a lot of impact, because of the major value. Was it true?
No, that's great. Trish Thompson is someone who was asked repeatedly for her guidance on that, and I think in our standard response as well, it's the local official's role to provide policy direction, but I think we could do more to illustrate what some of those examples would be. And I think, if not as a whole topic discussion, sort of walk through some scenarios, we could get out of that.
And I know you have a lot of good new grant writers, so maybe it's a part of your team.
Sam's referring to, and this is the last thing I'll announce unless there are more questions, we're increasing our staff by 50%. The board gave us a full-time staff support position this year, and a successful candidate was a Canaan Beach employee, Laura Morales, who we had worked with on outreach efforts. And I see that, not as a state can Canaan Beach as an employee, but as an opportunity to strengthen our relationship with the city. And in fact, just in the week of having made the decision, now that there are three of us and there are five cities, and it leads us to sort of a new concept where we have people in the staff that are liaisons to the cities. So just as we've encouraged the cities to bring forward a point of contact so that we're able to communicate efficiently, we do that for our end too, and that if you're a city you're calling to talk to, or you're calling to talk to this and for myself, so.
Could you briefly say a little bit more about the special districts? You said that earlier on, you said you've got more on the board for mitigation, what do you think you're talking about?
I'm talking about like bus district. Sure, I know the topic's emergency preparedness, but hazard mitigation is something we focus on largely, because it's such a, they say, you say, you know, six offers for everyone that you spend, you spend a disaster, you spend six hundred in the situation. So we're required to maintain hazard mitigation plan for the county. We update it every five years, and it creates funding streams for us, gives us access to the grants, pre-disaster mitigation grants and that kind of thing. The first plan was drafted in 2008, we had one updated, this will be our second, and it's a multi-jurisdictional plan for five cities and the county. And what it does is that it walks you through your hazard profile, helps you identify priority projects for your jurisdiction, and really tees you up. It's not the primary reason for doing it, but one really compelling reason is that it tees up jurisdictions for grant opportunities. It shows up whole community input, and it really makes a valuable, compelling argument. So we were contacted by DLCD to provide technical assistance, and they said, "We have some extra money this year, and FEMA is really encouraging special service districts to develop their own plans. They can no longer declare emergencies under the umbrella of local government." And our priorities are schools and fire districts and other special districts, and so you need to get some of those to the table. And so we, I, we looked at all of our special districts, there are a lot of them, and it wasn't realistic for a number of reasons. Like everyone started, I started with sort of unicorns, right? Fort SED, and then went to the college, we invited the schools, the fire districts, and then one, our sewer district, two, our sewer districts, just to get a feel for what that process would look like. Good idea of incorporating one of them. So we ended up with 12, schools, fire districts, the port, SED.
Tiffany, does that allow us to apply for grants before a hazard happens?
Not that I'm the one.
Absolutely. I mean, for instance, as an example in my district, Earl Wilson Park Fire District, it can't even get a yellow blinking light from Oga. They're deep into...
Thank you.
They need to...
Is another piece that might help us do that?
You know, they have some obstacles, but Lewisson Park is one of the free fire districts that has come to the table to develop an M N P, and within that, they can tell their story and talk about the challenges they have, and it does help them moving forward. You know, combined with other initiatives that are happening at the state level, you know, seismic rehabilitation programs, which wouldn't apply Earl Wilson Park, but reciting another hazard mitigation of projects.
So, thank you Tiffany, thank you very much. Unless there's more questions, I would like to ask by a show of hands if you found that this meeting was worthwhile. And I'd also like to see by a show of hands if you would like to schedule another one within 2020. Okay, so we will work on that. Yes?
How long has it been? I remember the last one, was it been two months?
It was, that's six for me.
That's all?
Yeah. Tina asked you what was on.
Time flies, doesn't it?
We were balancing.
Yeah, that's right, he did.
That was the discussion. Yeah, rather than have one a year, go to two or three a year.
Yeah, I think that's kind of what we decided at the last meeting. We'd like to have at least two a year. I don't know, can we check with the different jurisdictions to see what?
We will reach out and coordinate the next meeting.
Okay. Okay.
Would you like to...
Yes, yeah. It'd be nice to sort of rotate through the county for the meeting process.
I agree.
For the hosts.
I want to thank you all for your time and your dedication to your different jurisdictions, and I want to commend our staff for making this happen. We have, in Clatsop County, the best staff ever. Our people are so dedicated, hardworking, thrifty, experts. We could not ask for better staff than we have in our county.
And they get to work in Astoria, so...
That's right.
With our excellent staff.
I bet you every election here could say the same thing about all of their excellent staff.
Well, that may be, but I only know about ours here in the county. And I want to thank you for the food and setting up the tables and everything. So, I think we're done.
Thank you, thank you very much.